It being more or less the appointed hour, I hereby call to meeting, call to order, the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for Wednesday, January 18th, 2023. And I don't know who's, who's in the back room tonight?
Sherry.
Sherry, okay. Sherry, would you call the roll, please?
Chair Quilisi.
Here.
Vice Chair Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
Commissioner Starkweather.
Here.
Commissioner Trent is absent.
Okay. A pledge of allegiance, if Mr. Starkweather, if you would lead us, please?
If I could still remember that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Did you get twice out of three months?
Twice what?
Oh, no, okay. I just look a month back and try to keep the rotation going.
No, no, I was just joking.
Okay. All right, next on the agenda is public communications. The time set aside during the Planning Commission meeting for members of the public to address the commission on items of city business other than those on the agenda tonight. Matters at this time, matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission and will generally be referred to staff or placed on a subsequent agenda. And under state law, other than for emergency items, no action can be taken at this meeting. So, do we have anyone here present who wishes to speak during public communications? Or, Sherry, do we have anyone online with a raised hand who wishes to speak?
No.
No. Seeing no interest in those present, we'll move on. Next is our consent item, the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission for December 7th. Recommendation is approved as submitted, but do any commissioners have refinements to those minutes? That's our item one.
I'll say it. I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Sherry, call the roll on item one, please.
Quilisi.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Starkweather?
Yes.
Excellent. Sherry, would you turn your microphone up a little or the speakers up a little bit? All right, let me see here. Disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts. We have two sites in question tonight, the Rancho Inn and 1010 West Ojai Avenue. Mr. Starkweather?
I visited the Rancho Inn today and I talked to the woman out there who was behind the bar, and that was it. I just toured it. I didn't actually talk about what we were doing.
Okay. Ms. Murphy?
No expe- ex parte conversations.
Okay. I'm familiar with both sites and had no ex parte contacts. No expert, ex parte contacts.
It's catching.
Okay, very good. Let's go on then to item two, our discussion item, an annual review of the conditional use permit and design review permit on the Rancho Inn. Lucas?
Thank you, Chair Quilisi. So, good evening, commissioners, residents of the community. My name is Lucas Cyber, Community Development Director for the City of Ojai. The item you have for you tonight as a discussion item is an annual review. I'm going to give kind of an overview of the events that have taken place over the last year of note, and then we can certainly have a discussion. I know the applicants and the individuals that run these events are present and they may want to speak as well, and they have an attachment that identifies what they're potentially looking at in terms of future changes. But for what we're doing tonight, it's an annual review as a part of the conditions of approval that are part of the conditional use permit. The conditional use permit was before this body in December of last year, December 1st, was approved by this body. And then, within that approval was a condition of approval that required the 2022 events to be monitored and then an annual review to come back before this body. So that's what we're doing tonight. So, in terms of making decisions and changes, potential changes or adjustments to the conditions of approval, that can't take place tonight. If that is of an interest of this body, that would need to be scheduled at a subsequent meeting and applications filed to do so.
For a public hearing.
Correct. It would be a public hearing format, which we have processes for that. Notification was provided to neighbors, but it wasn't done in a public hearing format. We provide a notification to the neighbors within a 300-foot radius of the site, which is consistent with what was done last year. The difference is, is it wasn't done per state law, which talks about 10 days prior, and then it also going in the paper. Instead, we did a cursory review and notification to those neighbors.
So if a request comes in for a change to any conditions of approval, then it'll be the normal process for a public hearing?
Correct. And I anticipate, because it's part of the packet tonight, that that ask will come forward by the applicants and I'll have them do that ask. But I just want to give an overview of the events that took place over the last 12 months.
So we have nothing in writing about an ask?
There is an ask in writing that's a part of the attachments to this.
Attachment D.
Attachment B, okay.
Yes. And I put in the staff report that that ask, while it's certainly something that the commission can consider, it can't act on for tonight's meeting.
As a public speaker, I want to speak today on this issue.
Absolutely. So, if I could just run through kind of what staff has done over the last, community development staff has done over the last year. We've monitored and observed and documented conditioned compliance, which includes the following, the use of dedicated parking lots, including several of the, actually all of the parking lots that have been allocated and used as a part of these events. I think there's four parking lots in total that certainly go above and beyond what the minimum requirements are in terms of the number of patrons that have been allocated for annual, monthly, and weekly meetings. Setup and tear down times were monitored for events that were observed, as well as temporary sign placements, event staff at key locations, ensuring all those things were in compliance. And then obviously, compliance, the, a year ago, or more than a year ago, the thing that, the two items that cost, that caught the most attention were the noise and compliance with noise moving forward, as well as hours of operation, and then parking. All of those were certainly a part of the review that was done and monitored during these, these events, whether they were annual or monthly, and some of those weekly events that took place. And it should also be noted that the applicant provided staff in coordination with the attachment, I think it's attachment B or C, which is the Excel sheet that runs down the weekly, monthly, and annual events, and includes two weddings that took place over the last year. I think those are all worth noting. Staff observed some of those events, but also recognized that some of those weekly events, because they were happening on a weekly basis, the applicant was forthcoming with those events and making sure that they were complete.
That's attachment C is the spreadsheet that.
Correct.
As the compliance report.
And just to run down that list, there's about 23 weekly events that took place this last year, four monthly events, two weddings, and two annual events. And that kind of encompasses all the events that took place at Ojai Rancho Inn over the last year.
And all that, all those counts of different kinds of events were within the parameters of the COAs already?
Correct.
Yeah.
So if there were, the way in which this was documented and it was meant to be kind of a grassroots effort, if document, if documentation was provided by staff that then showed that it was over the threshold for a specific event, even though the applicant was identifying it as a monthly event, but it ended up tearing into an annual event, we were counting it as an annual event. So I think it's just important to note that. I know the applicant has identified that their goal is for some of these events to be seen as monthly or weekly events, but if they go over the threshold that's been identified within the conditions of approval, then it gets counted and marked as that specific type of event. And it's important that I say that because one of the events came in as a monthly event, but actually ended up getting counted as an annual event because it went over the threshold for a number of patrons that have been identified within the conditions of approval. So, I wanted to just highlight three of those, and one I just mentioned briefly, but I'll go through three of these as examples and kind of just as overviews. So, as I had mentioned, there were weekly, monthly, and annual events, and obviously two weddings that took place over this last year. Three to note, one is Folk Steady, which took place on April 10th, was categorized as a monthly event due to size. Complaints were received regarding parking and noise. However, staff observed the dedicated parking lots being used, and when noise readings were taken by community development staff, they were in compliance with the noise ordinance. And that reading is.
So no violation?
Right. So complaints, look, complaints can be received, and then we go out and we verify and clarify. In that case, the complaints were received, we went out to verify and clarify, and we found that the readings, which, the readings have been taken on the south side of the property, basically within the trail area, just along that edge. And that's part of the conditions of approval, which is to be taken along the edge of the property line. So that's, that's the way in which those readings were taken, and that's consistent throughout each of the events when we were doing those noise readings.
And how many people are allowed at a Folk Steady as compared to a monthly? I can't seem to find that in the previous.
Yeah, so the, the conditions of approval identify that anything 50 and, nothing over 50 patrons qualifies as a monthly event. If you're over 50, then you fall into the annual event. So anything between 51 and 150 would be qualified as a annual event. And that's one of the conditions of approval that's specified in the.
So you, what, how many Folk Steady events were allowed previously?
In terms of monthly events, I think they're allowed to have up to 12 monthly events.
Also, that Folk Steady is considered a monthly event?
It's supposed to be, and that, I think that's their intention.
Depending on who shows up.
That's their intention for it to be a monthly event.
Okay, okay.
Folk Steady again took place on September 25th. We noted that the, that it typically is a, is considered to be a monthly event, but ended up being an annual event because of its size. It was over 50 patrons. We counted in between 70 and 82 patrons. So that then fell into the annual category. Still within compliance with, with code regulations. However, complaints were received regarding noise and they were found to be in excess. So that was a violation of the conditional use permit. Noting that, staff then made contact with the event coordinator. They worked on reducing that, that noise level, and then took a second round of readings after that and found it to be in compliance.
Same contemporaneous readings.
Correct. In the same location, so it was a consistency aspect as well. And then the third event is the Deck the Halls, which took place on December 17th, just recently. This event was extremely well attended, as it should be. It's an annual event.
Excellent.
The limitations of this conditional use permit have it at 150 patrons. Our count was well over 200, which is in violation of the number, but I would remind this commission that the number was set at a, at a, kind of a.
Conservative level?
Conservative level in, in terms of, of seeing how the events go over the next year and that, and recognizing that that could be adjusted, but would need to go through a specific process in order to do that.
And were, at these larger events, were, were there parking spaces available? With legal parking spaces available or did they flow?
I will get to that. That's, that's my next point.
Okay.
So, from a parking standpoint, complaints were received, and mind you, we were already going out and doing and observing the event itself and noting a lot of parking along the streets. What we didn't recognize until we got complaints was that there were parking, these patrons were actually parking and blocking driveways and blocking red curbed areas that were fire, where fire hydrants are located. In trying to make contact with the, the managers for this event, they were, they were saturated with what was going on with the event, so we ended up having to make contact with PD. The police department ended up going out. Once again, we tried to make those residents aware of, or patrons aware of the fact that they were parked illegally, to no avail, ended up issuing citations and parking tickets, and ended up actually towing two vehicles that wouldn't move out of the, the dedicated parking area, the red curb parking areas, so.
So according to.
Not going to follow the rules, we're going to have to.
According to the proposal.
Well, hold on. The, here's the interesting thing is, is the parking lots were certainly being used, which is the dedicated parking lots that are a part of this conditional use permit.
As required, yeah.
And signage, in each of these events, signage was definitely up. And what we noted in each of these larger events is that patrons were not, not traversing along Ojai Avenue, but instead crossing the street and using that dedicated pathway and getting to the, to the, the trail, and then either entering on the south side, or there is a western entrance where there's also parking as well. So those were two critical things that we were curious as to whether or not those were going to be followed to the letter of the law, and they were. One note, and I, we weren't aware of this, but in having our kind of pre-meeting before, before coming here tonight, is there were obviously patrons that were parking at the Seville parking lot, which is just to the west, and individuals wanted to cross along Ojai Avenue on the south side, but that is not a designated area for, for crossing. There's requirements for that in order for that to take place. They've instead opted to redirect those patrons to either enter on the western side or on the south side along that trail. So, obviously sometimes you're going to have angry individuals, patrons, that are trying to enter an event and they think they know better, but the requirements were being held even though there were some words being exchanged, but the, the policies and the rules that we had in place were still being held.
Two questions about that, if I can. I see that under the proposal, they have 89 spaces off the street. Off, yeah. How many, at least proposed, how many did they have before? Or is that the same number?
You're, you're saying they're, the attachment.
They're proposing that they, parking solution is additional attendees, and they list all the places where they're going to park, and they say they have 89 spaces, which could equal 356 attendees, but how many do they have now?
73.
73, okay.
Yep. So it's, it's an increase in 16 is what they'd be looking at. So they'd be securing an additional parking lot.
That's objective five on the first page of Attachment D.
Okay. And the second question of that is, do they, did they, when people, you had the complaints, did you go out and find whether they had parking attendants? People that are like directing people to where to park?
Yes, each of the monthly and larger events that took place, we were always going out and, and going through these conditions, ensuring that they had the, the parking attendants out there, that they were redirecting, that there were the, the sandwich board signs redirecting, that there was proper signage, and I'll even have them speak to how they were deterring people. Because before, these events, people would just pull up, park their car, and then go into the event and, and pay no mind to the fact that there were signs.
On Ojai Avenue even.
Yeah, and what was happening is that you were having a large number of vehicles getting held up along Ojai Avenue, is creating more of a part, of a parking lot along Ojai Avenue. The solution to that was just not having part, any parking within that front area. They were agreeable to it, they found a solution to that, and I'd rather have them speak to that, to that solution, which seemed to work very well for Deck the Halls, which really is their premier event that happens each year, each year. So it's kind of a test. If you use any event that's a test for the events that happen subsequent to that, it's Deck the Halls. It's the largest event that they have each year. Can I answer your question?
I, it seems like, and I never stopped, but on, on Sundays or something, there were sometimes events there, and there were tons of cars all on the street. What were those, in the afternoon?
There could be, yeah, I mean, there are events sometimes that are in the afternoons, there are sometimes events that they have that are all day. Those are highlighted within the, the Excel sheet. So, sometimes there's events that are in between 1:00 and 7:00, sometimes there's events that are in between 10:00 and 5:00.
Folk Steady.
Folk Steady is probably your example, I think, yeah.
Sunday afternoon or evening.
Oh, those are afternoon ones?
Mm-hmm.
I did go to a march there one time, started that place, and there were cars literally on both sides of Ojai Avenue, but, you know, maybe that was me too, I don't know.
How, how recent was that?
Oh, gosh, it was in the summertime. It was Women's March about Roe v. Wade.
Okay.
So I don't know when that happened, but it was right at that time, yeah.
Well, that was definitely 2022.
Led by the mayor, so, yeah, I went to it.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions?
From the admin report and your presentation tonight, I take it that these applicants have, have perhaps more than generally attempted to abide by all the conditions of approval. The parking, as we discussed when we first had the case come up, is, is something over which they have some influence but no total control. And it sounds like the patrons that parked illegally were dealt with legally by the police department.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, and staff's recommendation, and certainly the nudge for the commission tonight to think about, is to allow this to continue as, through this, through this annual event, recognizing that staff will continue to work with them. The educational piece is something that I think they've worked diligently on. I think there's things that can be improved on. Anytime that you're, you're starting something new, you're going to have individuals, patrons in this, in this case, that are, are going to think the rules don't apply to them, but identifying that this is just the way moving forward. Well, hopefully, the idea is to get them to recognize that in order for this event to be successful, you just comply.
Okay. And.
All right.
And, and if you want to look at page 11 and on to page 12 of Attachment A, this talks about providing an annual report to the CDD and then having an annual review of the use and conditions by the Planning Commission. Without, without a sunset date at this point, and I suspect that will be an issue that will get an ask on as well, but without changing that, we're going to have a review every year.
Correct.
Yeah.
Were there ever a number of complaints allowed, so to speak, before which you hit a, a cap that says you can't do this anymore?
You know, there was never a discussion on, on like if we received more than five complaints that were reevaluating the conditional use permit that.
Didn't happen.
I don't recall a year ago having that discussion.
No.
Were there more than three that were received at any one time? I think Deck the Halls is probably the only one, and only because the number of patrons that were actually parking illegally. That was really the thing that was generating the most traction that I know community development was receiving several calls on.
Any more questions of staff? All right, well, let's, let's hear from the proprietors on this, or their representative or, or whatever, and thank you for providing the data that you have.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for taking the time to evaluate our CUP. We're hoping that after this review, we can have a permanent CUP in place so that we don't have to continually have an annual review. Of course, yeah.
Is that microphone on?
Okay, is this better?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Thank you for taking the time to evaluate our CUP. We're hoping that after this review, we can have a permanent CUP in place. Last year was a successful year of events with no violations. We learned a lot as we continued to fine tune our best efforts in educating our patrons, in educating our patrons on parking and path of travel, as well as constantly ensuring the decibels are reading at 65 or below. With our loyal following, these educational components will only improve over time as we share printed and digital parking and walking maps with QR codes through our social media platforms, websites, and newsletters. At each large event, we have dedicated event staff. This includes an event manager, sound engineer, parking attendants, and people directing traffic and pedestrians. At Deck the Halls, we had 20-plus staff present. We also use sandwich boards and parking cones to deter people from parking on Ojai Avenue. We inform our neighbors via email about our events ahead of time. This includes Mark and Shayna Tulkmut and Diane Vlasov. Mark and Shayna have been receptive to our efforts and have written us a letter of recommendation in support of our CUP. For future events, we will have our staff wear neon vests to ensure their visibility and authority. We will cone off areas where people illegally parked for this past Deck the Halls. We will also ensure the city and code compliance officer have our phone numbers to contact us during an event. Another change we made was a complete overhaul of our wedding package last year, where we no longer allow DJ dance parties for weddings or private parties due to the sensitivity of our neighborhood. And for the record, the Women's March, we were just providing a meeting spot for people to come. It was supposed to be like, come for 15 minutes and go on with your march, and we thought that maybe like 15 or 20 people were going to show up.
200.
Yeah. We didn't realize, but it was fun.
That was not a scheduled event.
It was just like a last minute, like, oh yeah, they need a meeting spot for the march, we can have it at the Rancho, it's central, and then march down there, but we really didn't know how popular it was going to be. Since the report shows that overall staff found these events to create minimal impacts to the surrounding community, we are proposing the allowance of six additional Folk Steady events, which classify as monthly events, along with an increased capacity for the annual events to 300 people and the monthly events to 150 people. With 89 parking spots we have leased, we have enough parking for 356 people. Deck the Halls has gained popularity over the 12 years we've been hosting it. Same with Folk Steady, over the eight years we've been hosting it on a monthly basis. Both of these events are well attended due to their community inclusion and providing a hub for locals to come together for free or a small donation to the artists. The Rancho is one of the few places in town where artists and musicians have a platform to perform and gain exposure without having to meet costs that they would incur at a regular venue. Folk Steady is also hosted by a local nonprofit organization, Greater Goods. All in all, I think we have proven our best efforts in complying with our CUP from this past year of events. We have come a long way in organizing our events, staffing properly, and being mindful of our neighbors. We look forward to continuing to collaborate with the city and ensuring successful events that bring financial growth and community inclusion to Ojai. Thank you.
Can you give your name?
Oh, sorry, I'm Kenny.
Physician?
Kenny Osahan, I'm the owner of the Rancho.
Okay.
Hi, commissioners, I'm Jonathan. The one thing that I wanted to add, we currently are approved for six monthly events, not 12.
Yeah, I may have mixed up the 12. I think the 12 was weddings, correct?
We would like 12. You can just add that mistake.
It shouldn't have been called monthly then, in the CUP.
Bimonthly.
It says monthly in there.
Okay, you, you heard the staff report when we opened the case tonight. This is a review, a change to the, to the CUP and the DRP requires a public hearing. So that'll be another, another get-together.
We were just asking, Lucas had advised us that this would be the time for us to ask, so we're just.
But we can't act on it, correct?
Yeah, we can't act on that tonight because this is not a public hearing. This is just a discussion item.
It is not, but you can certainly have the discussion.
Yeah.
You just can't take an official action.
And I, I note on your, you have on your project description, five objectives. Clearly, gain a permanent CUP without annual reviews. We can't act on any of those objectives tonight, per se, but number five, I think, is in, adding 16 additional overflow parking spaces, I think is entirely in your control. The attendance at weekly, monthly, and annual events right now is set with an upper threshold or a cap in the CUP, but the number of parking spaces is, at best, a lower limit. You can do whatever you want beyond, you can, you can have more than one parking space for every four patrons. That's, that's up to you if you wish to provide more, more parking spaces than the minimum number required in the CUP. So, you don't need to ask about that.
Chair Quilisi?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask a question? Mind if I ask a question, a follow-up question?
Please. Please.
We hadn't had a chance to talk about this beforehand, but you've added an additional parking lot. Where is this parking lot located at, and how did you come about the sixteen additional spaces?
So it's tied to, sorry, let me pull up the address number. It's tied to six-two-one West Ojai Avenue, Liv-Sutherby's building. And then they have an additional parking lot, which is seven-twenty, seven-twenty-seven West Ojai Avenue, also Liv-Sutherby's. So they've granted us to use their parking lot, their additional parking lot, and that's sixteen spots, and we've secured that.
Those two spots next to each other?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I was there today and I asked them about it.
This is between the Rancho and Country Club Drive?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
So if, if you don't mind me asking a question, then as far as these overflow parking spots, are we allowed to include them whenever we report events and, and count them as actual spots whenever we have reviews?
Yeah, the requirement under the CUP is that you report what you've done.
Okay.
So if you've added additional parking spaces and you use them, then just say so.
Okay, terrific. Thank you.
So we don't...
Correct.
I hate to ask a question, but we don't, we didn't specify how many parking spaces there were required to have.
It was one for every four patrons.
I see.
And so that set a lower limit on the number of parking spaces.
I see. So that's what seventy, what, seventy-five or something? What was the number?
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three.
Fifty people, that's about forty spaces.
Now we're talking about three hundred.
Well, the discussion would potentially lead to three hundred, which, um, at four, it ends up being, it's still less than eighty, what's the total number that you've got secured now?
Yeah, eighty-nine times four, which is three, three hundred and fifty-six parking spots.
I see. Okay.
So it'd still meet the threshold. What's, what I think is interesting is the parking lots that were being used, Deck the Halls is probably the, the event that you use to, to gauge...
Maximum capacity.
Maximum capacity, when you're looking at like an, an event and the number of parking spots you anticipate. It's kind of interesting, the success of that event is what's driving the way in which the parking lots are being allocated to, to a certain degree. And, and because of that, they, they recognize that they need additional parking, I think, is kind of the way that I'm, I'm seeing this with the, with securing that additional parking lot.
I would think additional parking also is better for customers having more choices and get, find them easier.
Patrons. Yeah, patrons having more choices.
Than just having the exact amount, and you're like going all around these various parking lots, 'cause they're all like separated, really. They're not all in one place.
It is kind of interesting because the, the pattern of, of parking is reflective of kind of how typically society works. They wanna park as close as they can to an event. And they recognize that if the parking lot that they wanna park at is full, they'll just find a parking lot, parking space along the street. But at least they're recognizing the first option, which is parking, at least the thought is, is they're recognizing the first option, which is to park.
In the designated spots, yeah.
Have you, can I ask another question of, okay. Did you look at assigning parking spots as, as patrons secure, I know we had talked about that at one point, and you were looking at strategies, and I think you, Kenny, you had talked about that earlier in terms of doing like a QR code and other, other items. At one point, there was a discussion, when someone secures a ticket, having that ticket then assigned to a specific parking lot. Is there a way in which you could, that could, that could be done? I'm, I'm thinking like...
I think in the last meeting when that was brought up, we decided that that was a little bit too involved because it would involve having to build a whole app platform, which can cost like millions of dollars. But I, I, I think, I mean, what we feel like, 'cause we didn't, our parking attendants and people that were controlling the traffic, they weren't wearing any vests or anything, so people didn't really know that they were there to do that, so in the future times, we'll definitely have it be more obvious who everyone is and...
I will admit, it, they did kind of blend in, but that's, that, those are, those are some of the things that are...
There are local sources for those bright yellow vests that you can...
And the southeast parking lot, is the most obvious place someone would park if they were just looking. That's where I parked when I went to that, uh, probably illegally, but anyway, for the, it was on a Saturday for that march.
That was legal.
Oh, was it legal? Okay, good. Wondered about it.
And as, as we discussed when the case first came up, if an individual patron decides not to use one of the designated areas, then they're subject to the same rules as any person who's a patron or not a patron, in terms of their ability to park anywhere in an otherwise legal space in the city. And they're also subject to the same rules about red curbs and fire hydrants and driveways, and it sounds like all that's been handled just, just the way it should be.
Right, and it's, I, when we were talking, um, a few weeks ago, but it was the educational piece. I think they've really done a good job in terms of starting that. It's continuing it, and it's the repetition, I'm, I have a feeling, is, is the necessary piece. And we're using Deck the Halls as kind of the premier event, but there's other events that they have that are...
That's the biggest stress on the system.
Yeah, I mean, the, yeah, I mean, Folk Study is another one that's been wildly successful for them as well. And I think, I have a feeling, will probably just continue to be successful, which is why they're recognizing the, the uptick in the number of patrons for this.
And I think we're all pleased to see the success, certainly.
Thank you.
But in terms of, of any of the requests here, that's gonna take another public hearing.
Okay. Does that also involve a whole other application process that's as in-depth as the first one, or is it...
No, not as in-depth. No, not even close. Yeah, it's...
Request to change a CUP, to modify a CUP.
Right, be modifications.
And they can tell you how to do that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for the applicants from commissioners?
Well, I'm, I'm assuming that the incremental revenue that you're...
Microphone.
It's on. Hello?
Hello?
I'm assuming that the incremental revenue that you're getting pays for the incremental costs, and so it's, it is economically viable for you to provide these additional services, both personnel and parking.
Yeah, the reason for our events is, I mean, we don't advertise beyond, I mean, our way of advertising is through events, and so to get people on the properties, locals to come to our events, and then that way, whenever they have friends or family coming to Ojai, they are like, oh, we just went to the Rancho, let's put them up there. So that's our way to bring in more income.
Do you do it all through social media?
Yeah, yes.
Guess that's why I don't know about them.
We do flyer, we flyer around here and there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. I, I think we're finished, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I have a speaker card here, it says for item one, but I presume this is for this item?
Yes.
Robin Gerber. Oh, we're opening, we're opening this discussion item for public comment. Okay.
Following the public hearing protocol, but we're opening it for public comments, yes.
And you'll do the timer for three minutes.
Hi, I'm Robin Gerber. Thank you for your service, all of you. I just wanna say that you're witnessing a real success story here. Some of you realize that, some of you are newer. This CUP has had a long and tortured history. I think, I'm happy to see Lucas smiling. He hasn't always been smiling at these hearings.
Not always.
It's been an educational process for Kenny, who I volunteered to help a few years ago, if you're wondering why I'm standing here, just because I was so amazed at this young woman on her own, who has built a tremendous business, that she's modest about is not just the Rancho, it's the Capri, it's the Hummingbird, it's another hotel she owns in Los Alamos, and restaurant, and she's just expanding her empire, all to our benefit.
Love success stories.
Yes. She's expanding her empire by helping all of us, even us old people who don't go to the events, but you should. And I do recommend all of you to go. I went to the Deck the Halls event this year, and I just had to get over being the absolutely oldest person there. But it was, it's, it's really wonderful, it's great fun, but most importantly, and I would say unlike some of the other hotels in town, we complain about tourism, but of course, we have tourists and they have to stay somewhere. And they come to particularly the big one up on the hill. And how integrated are they into our community? Not very much, as we all know. Kenny has made it a dedicated part of her business to, to combine locals with the visitors who come, to let people have an experience of really understanding our town and what it is. This is completely unique, I think maybe of any of the businesses in town, and it's a, it's a great success story. So I really, really urge you to give this woman her permanent CUP and congratulate her on her business, give her that permanent CUP. She has, as you said, there's been a great education process, she has learned and responded. I think it's been education for you too, Lucas, and I, I thank you for, for everything you've done, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else here present who wishes to speak on this item? Councilmember Francina.
Good evening. What the heck? Okay, so I wanna echo what Robin Gerber said. I, I think this is absolute, an absolute wonderful success story for the Ojai community. And I wanna just highlight part of the staff report where it says, on page three, "The future improvements along this stretch of Ojai Avenue through the Active Transportation Program, also known as the ATP Project, would allow for this route to be safely transferred along the southern part of Ojai Avenue." And my thinking is, if, if this, if the changes are not made by the end of this year, since progress is so slow, what more can we do to make this truly, this route truly pedestrian safe? 'Cause there are probably some things we can do, but, and what, what prompts me to address this is that I was personally kind of horrified when I drove past the Deck the Halls event, and I saw two or three signs telling pedestrians not to walk on, must've been the south side, right? Those, some realtors had put them out. But we need to reverse that kind of thinking. If it's really not safe, then we have to warn cars that they need to be going five miles per hour through that zone. There's nothing wrong with that, they can do it. We, we, don't give the cars, don't expect the cars to behave normally and impatiently. We need to have cues that this is a pedestrian-friendly zone, I mean, all the time, but especially during events like Deck the Halls. And then I was also thinking, I, I don't know if the organizers have done this, but there should be like great perks for all the people who don't drive, you know, mo, have, you know, something to, to motivate them to come with their cargo bikes and their kids on the back and all of that, which more and more people are doing, so let's make sure that they can do that safely and let the organizers include that in their advertising, you know, encourage it as a no, as a car-less, if not a no-car, can't be no-car yet, we're not that evolved yet, but we'll get there, a car-less event, so that people get some kind of a perk when they arrive. The kids get something and, you know, they can just, I mean, a lot of places do that already. So, and then my other thought was, what happened, what's happening on Sa, on that, on Saturday mornings and on the weekend with the Bank of Amer, with the Bank of Sierra parking lot? Is that, is that because there's no crosswalk to get across safely?
A block away, yeah.
Yeah, what? What's a, a block away? My God.
From Bristol over to the Bank of the Sierra is about a, it's a long block, but I think most, most of your suggestions have a great deal of merit, but you need to take them up with the folks that run the Rancho.
Well, they're here, I'm taking them.
I mean, those are not decisions that the planning commission can make.
I know, but it's just, I thought I would air it out and bring it, you know, and we're already thinking in that direction, more and more people, so I think there would be great support for that. But I wanna see what Lucas has to say about the Bank of Sierra.
I, I would, I would turn it to the applicant, 'cause I know they've, they've diligently gone out and reached out to, to, I would say, people, property owners and, and business owners within probably a five-wonder-foot radius, if not more, to engage and see when parking is available. I mean, financial institutions such as banks typically aren't open on Saturdays or Sundays.
Right.
Or holidays for that matter, so it probably is a great opportunity. But a lot of times, banks say no. They just, they just don't have interest.
They say no.
I would be curious to see if the applicant has...
I'm happy to go and ask.
So city, it seems like the city council, the manager, some should talk to all our banks, because there's the bank near the library, and I park there all the time.
Yeah, yeah.
There's no sign that says you can't.
The future, the future is shared parking.
Yeah.
The more we get that message across, the sooner the better.
And it'll be safer, it'll be safer to walk along the south side of Ojai Avenue once ATP puts sidewalks in.
Yes.
But until then, it's gonna be hazardous.
Yeah, but my, my, what I'm saying, that if it's hazardous, then we do something about the traffic that day. There are things that we can do, even though it's a Caltrans, there's even, there's signage, there's, we can make our own sign, they won't catch us, expect delays, pedestrian, you know, event in progress, something.
Isn't the ATP coming up soon?
It's coming up, it's coming up, I think next meeting, actually.
Okay.
But, you know, by the time they implement...
Grandchildren will see the sidewalk, but...
Yeah, yeah.
I asked a question of the applicants, kind of, 'cause you brought up with bicycles. And so do you, like, show people the route that they could take, the bicycle trail?
Yes.
'Cause, I mean, that would be, I mean, you got young people coming to this thing, it seems like they oughta be on bicycles.
If you, if you look at...
If the applicant could come up and speak to that, I know we have a condition that, yeah, I know we have a condition already identified in there, and I know they've been providing additional parking for bicycles, bicycles that have been coming here on site for these events.
Welcome to Ojai Rancho Inn Hard, that is distributed, and that shows the suggested route of pedestrian travel.
Yeah, we have that map, and it's digital. People can scan a QR code, so they have it on their phone. We print it out as well.
Can you speak to the bicycle parking? I know we have it as a condition of approval. Where's, where is that typically designated? I know it's probably different for each event.
So everyone for Deck the Halls, for our largest event, comes through the back, through the bike path, and there's, uh, there's bikes that are parked along the fence there.
Are they...
Into that big backyard?
Yeah, that backyard, yeah.
Okay, 'cause I went through there, a little muddy right now, but...
Right, right, yeah, so, so people can...
Is that inside a gate or otherwise lockable, or...
Yes, yeah, so people could park their bikes there, and that's a good idea, maybe in the future, we can...
How many do you have? How many parking, how many bike, you don't have racks, it is just...
We, yeah, we just have one small rack, but I think if people came there, they could just lock their bike to itself, and it should be fine. But there's plenty of space for people to park. We can do a designated bike parking area and maybe offer people a drink ticket or something for riding their bike.
Yeah, but having actual bike racks, it does remind people to go to an event, actually there's a bike rack, because people who are bringing Pedisys-type bikes, you know, motorized bikes or whatever they're called, uh, those are expensive.
Right, right.
And they definitely wanna have them locked up and visible for, you know, they don't wanna just lock them to themselves.
Cristalite lock on the frame and the rear wheel should do it.
Someone at the, at the Ojai Athletic Club who had one of those bikes, and he just, he got lazy, just locked it, his own bike, and someone just picked it up and took it.
Oh, picked the whole bike up?
Picked the whole bike up and just took it, 'cause it wasn't locked to a bike rack.
Well, we've got staff all around, so if we see anybody carrying a bike out, we'll...
Yeah, I would, I would think it would draw some attention, and plus, those bikes are in between like sixty and ninety pounds, they're not a light, they're not light.
Anyway, thank you very much. If, if you wanna pursue these objectives, we'll have another public hearing on the, on the issues.
Can they address what happened at Bank of Sierra?
I don't know Bank of Sierra.
Oh, that's at the corner of Rincon and Ojai Avenue.
Across the street.
So if we ask them to...
It no longer has the local management, you have to, you have to go to Porterville to get to a manager. It was the old community, Ojai... It was the old community, Ojai Community Bank, which got sold. And, uh, it's now headquartered in Porterville, and they, and they answer the phone in Porterville.
If, if you're, if you're providing parking spaces for more than 300 people.
We already have enough, yeah.
You may not find a need to go search out additional spaces, at least at the moment.
Right, because we are paying for the, all the additional parking spots, and we have all the additional parking spots insured too, so it is a cost to us, so I think getting extra parking is not, if it's not needed, then.
Okay, well, thank you for a local success story.
Thank you, thanks so much.
Is there, Lucas, is there a decision that we need to vote on and make tonight? Or have, have we completed the review?
You have satisfied?
Without raising any serious objections, or?
Yeah, I mean.
Where do we stand there?
So, there is no decision being made tonight, it's more of a, a report, a receive and file, ask questions, receive information from the applicant, um, and they've done some asks, and we'll walk them through that process, um, for those, uh, proposed amendments, and that'll probably be coming before this commission in the near term as a public hearing item.
Okay, I guess perhaps one final question of the applicants, then. Is there anything else more that you need to ask of staff or the commission tonight before you go on to make decisions about what you're going to do in the future? If not, that's fine.
Do we need any additional surveys done?
Can you, come on, guys?
Do we need any additional surveys done to increase occupancy at the events?
Surveys, what do you mean?
Like parking, so, oh, we already did the parking survey, do we need to do anything else?
Yeah, the parking survey is already done.
Okay.
That's, that's complete. The information that's here, I think, is really pertinent information as you move forward with your requests. Now, we'll probably have to iron out a little bit more after this meeting, what those requests are and put those more in writing. Right now, you've got them in bullet point format, we're going to need to tease out additional information. But I think at this point, it's a receive and file here. Any additional, um, clarifying pieces of information that are necessary for this proposed amendment to the conditional use permit can be done in writing at a future date.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to, uh, Agenda Item Three, uh, request for a miscellaneous permit to reestablish a non-conforming, single-family residential use at 1010 West Ojai Avenue. Maura, I think this is yours.
Yes, it is, thank you Chair Quilisi and, um, and Commissioners. I'm going to repeat that, um, that this is a miscellaneous permit, it's 22-065, and it's a proposal to reestablish a non-conforming, single-family residence located at 1010 West Ojai Avenue. 1010 West Ojai Avenue is in the Business Professional Commercial District. The property, um, is developed with a single-family residence, and pursuant to Section 10-2.503, important, that's, uh, Commercial and Manufacturing District land uses and permit requirements of the municipal code, single-family dwellings are not permitted, um, in this district. Therefore, the previously occupied, single-family residence was a non-conforming use. And the Planning Commission tonight is charged with review and determination of this miscellaneous permit pursuant to 10-2.1303. That is restriction on improvements of non-conformities. And this section includes that no non-conforming use can be reestablished after having been discontinued for 180 days or more, unless it's specifically allowed by the Planning Commission through a hearing. And so that, hence the miscellaneous permit. The city records indicate that the vacancy of the residence is more than 180 days. The property was sold in June of, of '21, and there was a delayed vacant property registration that was received in December of 2021. The property includes two accessory structures, along with the single-family residence. The surrounding structures, um, or surrounding the instructors is an unimproved yard area, including many trees, including some, um, protected oaks and sycamores. The property has two curb cuts, one on West Ojai Avenue and the other along Del Norte. The, um, parcel adjacent to the west is a commercial building, and single-family residences are adjacent to the east and north. And across West Ojai Avenue is a small patch of open space, which is adjacent to the public bike path. The small.
Rotary Park.
Rotary Park. The smaller of the two accessory structures has a finished interior and may have been a non-permitted, um, guesthouse. The current request is for reestablishment of the single-family use only. If the applicant wishes to convert or use that accessory structure as a guesthouse or an ADU in the future, they'll have to do so under a separate permit. Staff is recommending approval of the request to reestablish the single-family residence. And again, it's the single-family residence use only. And the recommendation for approval is subject to conditions of approval, including one specific one, that would be to use the Del Norte access only and to close off the West Ojai Avenue access. And there was a question to that, or about that before the meeting, and so I want to let the Planning Commissioners know that it's because, um, Ojai Avenue is, has a heavy traffic volume, and just for safety purposes. And, and also there are acts, streets and, um, driveways on either side, and it's ju- just for, for safety purposes, and since they have an alternative, um, access, we're recommending that condition. And we do have, we should have an applicant here, um, virtually.
Can you tell me, when was this last occupied?
Don't know exactly when it was occupied, but, um, as I indicated in the staff report, we received a, um, a delayed vacant property registration on December 8th, 2021, and we know that the property was sold in June of 2021. And since, since sold, vacant, because we got that delayed vacancy registration.
Yeah, as, as a frequent walker in that area, as well as other areas of town, I can testify that there has been no apparent residential use of the property for at least a couple of years. So. Probably longer than that, but I, I wouldn't venture to guess how long.
So, do we have any policy around how long someplace can stay vacant and then just come back and?
Yeah, it's the 180 days.
Yeah, it's 180 days.
Longer than that, obviously.
Right.
So, they're here.
So, as long as it's 180, once it passes 180 days.
Doesn't matter whether it's been 10 years or one year.
Absolutely, correct. Um, it's a non-conforming use, and in order to reestablish it, per the code that I mentioned, the Planning Commission has to bless it. And that's the request for this meeting.
Yeah, and that specific, just to jump in here, sorry. That specific code section, which is the non-conforming section, um, which is Article 13, does not give a, well, if it's more than 10 years or more than five years, then it just can't be reestablished. It provides the, the platform is before the Planning Commission to make that determination.
I, I have a question for the staff. From the Y all the way up to beyond the school on that side of Ojai Avenue, that's the only, single-family residential building facing Ojai Avenue, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, and can, is there any shortage, uh, in that area of single-family dwellings? Or is, uh, what, why would we want to change what has happened in that area? Which is, it is, you have a mixture of uses there, including public uses, like the schools, and, um, and then commercial usage and offices, um, things like that.
So, why would you want to do this, is that the question?
Why would we want to do, why would we want to do this?
Well.
To be nice?
Even, uh, I wanted to, I want to, even though it's a, a non-conforming use, it's not permitted. A single-family use is not permitted in the, today, in the BP zone, but you did say that there were a mixture of uses, so I just wanted to highlight that.
Right.
But also, it's an, it's an existing, uh, single-family house that was built, you know, a long time ago, and, um, it's, yeah, 1913, actually. And, um, it, it was, it's been occupied, um, I, I would say on and off, but probably mostly on. It's, it's established, it's, it's existing, and.
My understanding is that the, the applicant intends to live there if this is approved.
I did, I.
That's irrelevant.
I, I did hear that, um, however, I'm, I'm not certain that that's the case. I believe there's, there's an LLC that owns the property. And there, I believe there's more than one, or there were more than one property owners, so.
Yeah, and then, I know, I'm looking at the attendees, and at one point, um, the attendee had their hand up, so I have a feeling that when it comes, now, there isn't anybody in the audience with the exception of, uh, Councilman, Councilperson Souza, uh, that could speak on this as well. And I think they're probably either the applicant or representing the applicant.
Yeah, they're, um, a representative.
So, this was, um, reason, this area was, zoning was changed to become commercial at some point?
Yeah.
Because it was single-family at one point, and?
Yeah, so I, I think in 2004, when we did that huge code update, that's when, um, a lot of that zone, those zone, those zoned areas were, were modified. This area then became BP. Could have been, I'm not really sure what the zoning was before that, but it was a zoning that would have allowed for, um, single-family residential.
Or, or no zoning at all, perhaps.
Back in the 20s.
The current doesn't allow for that, and of course, we have a lot of other, single-family residences in our business zones that are not, that are used as businesses. That's why you change those zones, so that.
Sure, they have, they have a single-family use to them, but they operate as a professional use or something along those lines.
Like Matilla High Avenue, there's a bunch of.
Sure.
Single-family homes that are businesses.
Not uncommon.
And is, that's not a single fam- that, was, was Matilla Avenue allows, single-family houses on, on that? Or is that in that, is that the same zone?
A lot of that's VMU.
Yeah, it's mixed use, yeah.
So, that's VMU, okay, so that's mixed.
A mixed use a lot, VMU allows for, single-family residential.
So, why was this not part of VMU, is this too far away from downtown, or?
I can't.
It's along Ojai Avenue.
BP, because it was clearly a residential lot with a house and a guesthouse and a garage.
Well, somebody in the city governance decided that this area ought to be business. As opposed to residential.
It's along West Ojai Avenue, um, just, um, east of, is it, is it the, is it Vaughn's there?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's in a, it's a commercially developed, developing, developed area.
I think on the other side of the road is a couple of, single-family houses.
There are, to the north on Del Norte, um, there's single families. So, it butts up to, I mean, if you look at this property, it has kind of an L shape to it, takes ass, access off of, uh, Del Norte as well. And as, um, Maura had, had referenced earlier, the, there's a condition of approval in the resolution that identifies that access is to continue being taken off of Del Norte, but not off of Ojai Avenue. Now, if there's a future proposal for development, then we can look at whether or not access is taken off of Ojai Avenue.
You mean like a commercial development?
Correct.
Future development, I'm not going to specify what that future development looks like.
Can we do anything to lock in the use that we're granting now? So that we don't have to go through this in six months or nine months, that the person who's saying that they want it to be a, single-family dwelling, in fact, executes on that as opposed to does a, you know, here, I know you're voting for this, but I'm going to be back in six months to, I, I really have something else in mind. Is there, can we, can we say, and it shall be so occupied for the first five years or three years or something?
Oh, put a time limitation on it?
Yeah.
In terms of the minimum? Hmm, you could, the applicant would have to be agreeable to the time limitation.
It would be probably. It would not be agreeable.
They'd have to be agreeable to it.
They, they would have, they would have to agree to it.
Yeah, because they're, they then are agreeing to the conditions. If they don't agree to the conditions, then they have the right to appeal, which then would go to council.
So, there are conditions on non-conforming uses?
There are conditions that are being placed on this property as a part of it being a non-conforming use, yes. Absolutely. To your point, I think I know what you're getting at, and that is, if, if the commission is taking the time to review and consider this matter, but then recognize that in six months, or a year, or a year and a half from now, a different project is proposed, that is within the rights of that developer or that property owner to, to make those requests.
They want something from us, I mean.
Right, but it's still within, and tonight, the commission could take action and say no to reestablishing a, single-family.
I, I can think of another one that we've had in this past year, where somebody came in and ostensibly was looking to do X with the property, but upon poking and prodding, it was clear it was Y that they wanted to do with it. But were not forthcoming, and as a result, we were going to have to go through a second process on, on the property, and the, and the property owner was not really being forthcoming in, in terms of intention. And, and it seems to me that unless the property owners are being forthcoming, we can't begin to think long-term about where the property is and where it's going, and how it fits into the other, other areas that are around it, and.
It's a fair point.
Can, can we just not hear from the?
Yeah, we, we can do that, and I, I think a lot of what we're doing right now is probably appropriate to discussion after we've heard from the applicant and.
I just want to make sure that what I was asking for is, is permissible, and, and you're saying that it's permissible, it may be appealable, but it's permissible, and we would be able to use the leverage of the fact that they wanted to turn this into something which could be retained as a, single-family, um, house.
What we're being asked for tonight is permission to reestablish the property as a, single-family residence. Okay. At that, it is, it is a, i- if we were to approve this, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, we would approve a, single-family residential use as a legal, non-conforming use in a BP zone.
Right.
Okay. If, if there were, um, a desire to do anything else other than to have a, single-family residence, non-conforming, in a BP zone, that takes another public hearing, because it's going to involve, uh, uh, either a development of something in, in the line of BP kind of stuff, or a zone change and some other sort of development, all of which would have to come back through here in a public hearing anyway.
Anything that's developed there would be required a, a design review permit at minimum.
Yeah, I, I understand that, and I, I, but I, what I want to do is reduce the number of times that people get up in front of us to ask for something that they don't intend.
Or incremental change.
Well, or no change, but they're doing it as part of process, and will come back to us when they have a permanent host, and I realize we have this person there, so we might as well hear them.
That we could actually ask.
Let me ask a question of, of Lucas about the statute here, or ordinance. Section 10-point dash 2.103.
13.
Do you have it in front of you? B.
I have it ready.
Uh, just tell me what this means exactly. "No, non-conforming structure may be added to, structurally altered, or enlarged in any manner." How literal is that?
Well, it's not, it's not what, what's being asked for here, because this isn't, um, a non-conforming structure, it's a non-conforming use.
Oh.
And.
Doesn't the non-conforming use include structures?
Not necessarily, the non-conforming use may, it's a non-conforming use, it's not a, non-conforming structure. A non-conforming structure, um, may be one that would be a setback issue or a lot coverage issue, so in order to enlarge it, or a height issue. So, in, in, if you wanted to, um, increase that encroachment into a setback, for instance, or, um, increase the height that's already higher, that's already higher than is permitted, that's a, non-conforming structure. This is a non-conforming use.
So this is actually under non-conforming use. It says no non-conforming use-
Yes.
-may be established or replaced by another non-conforming, except as provided by this article. And then I read those sections.
Right, this, this-
We are talking about the use here.
Right, the, this section-
Whatever buildings are there can't be altered without substantially altered.
And that's not what they're doing here, they're, they're looking to reoccupy-
But I mean, I just want to make sure that they understand that. Since they have these other outbursts.
We'll talk to them about it. I do have one other point of clarification with staff. And, and I apologize, I wrote the question to Mara a couple of days ago, and she answered every one of my questions, and I can't remember this answer. If you re-establish this as a single-family residence, regardless of the underlying zoning, does the requirement for two covered parking spaces go along with that? And if the answer is yes, does the garage that's at the very north end of the property meet that requirement? Because I think I heard tonight that the request is only for the main residence or the ma, the major building on the site.
The response that I gave you was that it's, the request is to re-establish the previously existing, or the existing single-family use. And it would be, re-establish it as, as it is. And-
And that's with, and that's with a two-car garage?
With whatever that accessory, whichever size that accessory structure is.
Okay. All right, any more questions for staff at this point? Then can we hear from the applicant?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, just, all right, go ahead.
It would appear, I drove by and looked at it somewhat carefully, and it would appear that there had been some cleanup work that's been done quite recently to the property. Maybe even including painting window frames and things like that. Are they allowed to do that at this point? Are they allowed to begin painting without, is there a design issue around that?
Because the property is in a BP zone, in order to paint or do any type of cosmetic, they would need to come before the planning commission with a planned development permit. Nope. I mean, I'm sorry, a design review, it does, a design review permit, I'm talking another city, sorry. And that is also goes along with landscaping, which there's a specific condition in here, inherent as to landscaping.
So you're saying recently, they've been, they've been doing painting? I would, I would turn that to the applicant and have them respond to that.
I don't know, we'll ask them.
Yeah. If you're, if you're cleaning up weeds on the property, I don't think anybody controls that.
It looked as if somebody had taken a bucket of paint and, and a brush. Well, we can ask them. We can, I, but the reason for asking our staff is to find out, can we, is that a good idea or not? I mean, meaning is it allowed or not? We can then ask them whether it's happened, that's the second thing, but I have no idea. It could be meaningless that they painted the windows.
Well, if it was recently sold, it's quite likely that somebody, somewhere, painted something.
Right, but in this, but in this area, you have to come through us. Now, whether you should have to come through us or not is another question, but-
Right, but if it's, if it's black-letter law in the code right now, then, yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Any more questions for staff at this point? All right, can we hear from the applicant then?
Yes, Sherri, please, can we hear from the applicant?
Yeah, she's on. Robin?
Hi, my name is Robin Nanny, can you hear me?
Turn it up.
Turn it up, and repeat your name, please.
My name is Robin Nanny, and I am here on behalf of the owner. So I can, I'm coming from the perspective of being a, the principal of a design company that's working with him on, and I see that you need to hear me better. I'll try to speak louder.
Thank you.
Slower.
Okay, how is this? Is this better?
Yes, definitely.
Excellent, okay. My name is Robin Nanny, I am representing the owner tonight. I am working with him as a design professional, as he looks at how to develop this lot in a conforming use. So I hope that answers the question. When we were recently up there, just less than a month ago, we saw that a window was broken, and it looked like there was some vandalism or potentially even a squatter type of situation was happening. And that is what spurred him to really ask, to dig into whether we could have somebody live on the property while looking at the larger process. He doesn't live in Ojai, and he's concerned about having a vacant property that's already showing some vandalism. So the primary request here is around securing the site and not letting it fall into further disrepair.
So does someone plan to use this in a residential way within the next hundred and eighty days and until, until you decide to do something else?
He would like to rent it out, is my understanding, for, for the sake of security, while it's under whatever timeline it will take to develop something that's conforming and approved by the community and, and the design review process.
Either conforming by doing BP-type development or rezoning the property.
Correct.
Both of which would take a hearing here, and at least in terms of rezoning, a hearing at the city council.
So it sounds like you're asking us to allow a temporary non-conforming use, so you can rent it to somebody, and nobody will, you know, destroy the property. Is that what you're saying?
That is absolutely correct. Thank you.
And, and then come up with a new use and be sure that you can conform to the new use?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. So ultimately, you're not trying to create a single-family house there, you're trying to make the person who is going to live there to prevent vandalism operating under, under the law-
Like a caretaker.
Like a caretaker. And, but your intention is actually to come up with a different use altogether, which you will then operate under once you've gone through the civic process.
And ma'am, what's your timetable for this design and coming back to us with a conforming use?
We are hoping to be back in front of the review in, in four to six months. The sooner the better, let me say that. But we need to give whatever space we need to give to the community process. So we're trying to be both optimistic but realistic, that that's going to take some time. And we're not in control completely of the schedule.
Can I ask you, do you see the ultimate use, using the current buildings, or do you see them ultimately being demolished and replaced with other kinds of buildings on the property? It's a fairly large property.
You know, it's hypothetical at this point, because we're really in a concept review and really looking at the zoning. I'd, I'd suspect we're probably going to have to substantially renovate, if not replace the existing buildings, based on just the, you know, ADA requirements is pretty typical with any use added here as to BP. And so we're, we're being cognizant of the amount of redevelopment that has to go into it, whether we keep the existing structures or not, if we keep, if we're toeing the line, you know, with the, with the zoning.
At least major modifications, if not replacement of the buildings.
Correct.
Well, and, and as I heard today, there's a curb cut on Ojai Avenue. And as you're looking at the concept that you're planning, you could be diverting traffic off of Ojai Avenue onto, it's Del Norte, isn't it?
Del Norte, yeah.
And the, both the traffic volume and type should be consistent, I would think, with the lower end of Del Norte there, where, where it joins up at the Y. That if we're going to take everything, move it around there so there's no longer Ojai Avenue access, which I believe is the right thing to do, because it, it would be a mess to have cars backing up trying to turn right into that parking lot of this building if it's going to have a lot bigger volume, a lot more cars parked in it. It could be problematic.
Does the-
Does the adjacent business have an entrance on Ojai Avenue?
Yeah, both the adjacent businesses. The, the professional building there and that former gas station on the corner.
Well, then, I, I don't see a problem with coming in with a right-hand turn.
We should discuss all this during deliberations. All right, are, do we have any other questions for the applicant? We've got a general idea, I think, that, that the long-term plan is not for a single-family residence, but the short-term plan is to secure the facility.
Understood.
Anything else? All right, thank you very much, ma'am, we appreciate you coming in to talk to us tonight.
Thank you so much.
So is there anyone else? I see no, no one except our city council liaison still in the building. Is there anyone online with a hand raised that wants to speak on this?
No.
Okay, very good. Then, then we will open and then instantly close the public comment portion of this. And this is, this is another discussion item? Okay. And we'll come back to the commission for deliberation. As, as Mara knows, I asked a question about, about the Ojai Avenue driveway cut that exists now. And I was out, I spent the day in LA on other business. But coming back, I took particular note of where exactly there is a left-turn lane in the middle of Ojai Avenue and where there is not. And as we just noted, both of the professional and business properties to the west, that between this and Del Norte, have curb cuts, which presumably are used off of Ojai Avenue. And in front of those properties, there is no left-turn lane. The, the street, the street striping eliminates the left-turn lane. But in front of this property, there is a left-turn lane.
Is that because of the building that's further to the north? I mean, further to the east of the property?
To the east is a residence and then El Paso Road.
So right here, this way?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So why is there a turn lane there?
I think it is probably used more by westbound traffic turning left into either Boku or the Rotary Park parking lot. But there is in fact a third lane striped.
But you can go either way.
You could turn left.
Oh, I, I see, it's allowed you to go both ways, okay, for the other traffic.
There's a center, there's a central left-turn lane in front of the property. And, and I personally, I'll go with whatever the commission thinks, I guess, well...
Well, here's-
But I would, I would, I would hate to restrict this.
We don't face this yet, is I, which is where my colleague is insisting I understand. Well, yeah, to get the approval for the ultimate design and use, at the moment, we're asking for an interim use here.
That could be reconsidered, you're saying. If there's subsequent development, then the use of an Ojai Avenue entrance to the property could be reconsidered.
They might request it.
They may request it. See, the other thing is that the curb cuts for the area to the west of this property are for a gas station, and they're huge. Gas stations have huge curb cuts.
Plus, there's a professional building there with a tax office and-
Right. But I'm just saying that the nature of this is that, that, that the curb cuts are quite different than this very narrow curb cut.
Oh, yeah, it was a residential curb cut, yes.
Yeah, to be taken at a slow speed, not the traffic speed of the-
And the width of that interest.
I think we can deal with all of that when we get there. I wanted to find out, and I, and I think I have, that there, this is not, they're not applying for a single-family permit here. They're, they're applying for a temporary single-family permit so that a caretaker can stay there while they're putting together their plans to bring back to the city for some other development.
Something else, yeah.
Something else. And at that time, they will bring a quote conforming, or they'll bring back a plan which is not conforming, but they'll ask to, to have it conform, and then they'll conform.
Have we ever had anything like this, where someone is getting a non-conforming use in a business zone, and they're going to temporarily have someone as a caretaker in a house that's not going to become a house? That seems awfully, uh-
Unique?
Yeah, awfully kind of misusing the ordinance, I don't know, to me.
It, in fact, I think, was part of the grand bargain with the Becker Group, because there's a caretaker house at the property-
Mallory?
At, no, no, not at Mallory. At, at Ventura and Matilah.
You mean the-
Way back, it was the city hall.
The university, uh-
World University.
World University, yeah.
And, and now, they're, they're looking to make it a residential property. But if you are on Matilah, you will see there is a small single-family residence on the northwest corner of that property.
That was the old Parsonage. I think that state always had residence.
But it could be a caretaker property as well.
Yeah, but I don't think they had to rezone to do that. That was always a single-family unit there.
It was a legal non-conforming single-family unit-
Yeah.
On either, on a BP or a PL.
Yeah.
In that case, PL property.
But they didn't change that in any way.
No, but I'm saying that existence is similar to what they're talking about here. Having a caretaker residence on a piece of property.
Had it been abandoned, and now they, they brought it back, the same kind of circumstance? Because I think that it continued to be-
I'm not sure whether there was any abandonment of-
No, I don't think there was.
Residential use of that.
Because I've canvassed that area, and that house has always had somebody in it.
Yeah, it's, it's currently occupied. So I don't know that I want to necessarily use specific examples, but in the last ten years, there isn't an example of something like this coming before this body for determination. So it is somewhat unique, but it also lends itself to identify that within the code, when you're looking at non-conforming uses, you should always recognize that there are uniquenesses when you're looking at non-conforming uses. So this is one of those caveats that's been carved out. I should note that there are several conditions. I was thinking that there's only one or two conditions within the, the resolution for commission to consider, but there are literally eleven, is what I'm seeing here. So we're not, I think, I think what you need to recognize, what this body needs to recognize, is staff is not taking this lightly either. And I can recognize that this body is not taking this lightly either. Even though recognizing it would put single-family residential back into use and existence, they're identifying on a temporary basis, but I don't know how temporary, temporary.
Can we put a, a limit that kind of force the issue?
What's the point?
Six months?
What's the point of doing that? If, if their design and getting all the approvals takes ten months, a year, what, what, why do we care?
Or two years or five years. The, the reality is, is the, this body can place that condition on, on a, re-establishment of a use that's completely within- Exactly.
And my opinion is that it is better to have somebody living there, I agree with the applicant, than having a vacant property. So it, I have no trouble approving this request.
We've had other places where we put time limits on there, temporary stuff. The Love Social Cafe had to come back, they had a temporary approval.
That's review of a CUP, which we just did one tonight.
Well, you can review the non-conforming use and find out the progress that's going on.
Yeah, you could.
What's the point?
Might I, might I caution this commission, and I know I said this with- Might I caution this commission, and I know I said this with Love Social, of doing annual reviews. At some point, each of these uses are gonna suddenly have an annual review. Instead of having new product coming forward or new applications coming forward, we'll be reviewing old applications that have come forward. So there is a considerable amount of staff time that goes into these types of annual reviews. We've gone through it for the first time. We'll be going through it again in a matter of a couple of meetings for another item.
For Tippel and Ramble.
Yeah. I don't want to necessarily mention specific names or applications, but just know that we're seeing a trend here, and there is a lot of time that staff spends on that, and that is not recovered through the application process.
Oh, because it's not a new public hearing?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. And I understand that. And I think that while it can be reasonable to ask for a review, the commission at some point should decide whether or not the applicant has sufficiently demonstrated ability and willingness and dedication to following the rules in the CUP such that annual reviews are no longer required. And I don't know that one annual review is sufficient to do that. Maybe two is, depending on our history with an individual applicant, it may take one year or two years or more to reach a point where everyone is in agreement that the applicant is following the rules as best they can. And the sooner we reach that point, the better off everyone is. It's less hassle for the applicant, it's less hassle for staff. But if you want to try a motion for an amendment to the CUP, or, I'm sorry, an emotion...
It's a resolution, not a CUP.
Doesn't sound like I have a lot to support that idea.
Amendment to the resolution, then we can try it.
I just raised the issue. I do see, fortunately, number five here, condition. You do have that section of the 10, 10-2, 1-3, 03.
You can't enlarge the non...
Can't enlarge it, the thing I was reading from. That's in your conditions.
But I do have one additional question for staff. As the resolution is currently written, leaving aside the parking, not the parking, but the curb cut thing, if, I don't see in here where it says that the request is to reestablish residential use only on the primary building. But if that is in fact the request, then the secondary building that looks sort of like a guest house cannot be used as a guest house, and the third building that looks kind of like a garage cannot be used as a garage? Is that the upshot of approving this resolution?
Approving this resolution is, the resolution is very clear about the accessory structure that may have been used as a guest house at some point. There's a condition in there that that building cannot be used as a guest house or an ADU without coming back here.
Okay. Regarding the garage?
Regarding the garage...
Or the thing that looks like a garage?
Right. The intention is that that can be used as a garage or whatever a single-family use might use some accessory structure as.
And the resolution is silent on the third building?
Correct.
So if we reestablish residential use, it could be a reasonable residential use-type building?
Accessory to, yes, accessory to a single, right. It can't be a dwelling of any kind.
Yeah.
Okay.
The beauty in this is recognizing that this body has the ability to reestablish the use as a single-family residential use. It can also condition, we've provided some conditions here, it can also condition individual buildings that currently exist on the property. Meaning if the reestablishment of a single-family use is only for the main residence, then we specify that, and we carve that language into the conditions of approval if this body moves in that direction.
Have we done that?
Condition one says approved projects shall substantially, shall be substantially consistent with the approved architectural plans on file with the community development department. Those plans are attachment B. So you can see a site plan here that identifies existing one-story residence, existing building guest house, existing building two-car garage. We already have recognized that the guest house has not been legally established, so that would have to go through a staff review and process.
And which condition was it that barred use of that as a guest house?
That would...
I did see in 10 that you said no short-term rentals, but...
Well, since we're specifically requesting that this be a caretaker house, why would we approve a guest house to a caretaker house?
No, I'm not saying that we would or should. I'm just trying to figure out where in the resolution the garage and the guest house are mentioned.
Yeah, I think they should be excluded from residences specifically.
I'm not sure why we would exclude the garage from being used as a garage. If we're going to allow somebody to live in the residence, doesn't it make sense that they would park their car in the garage that's on the property?
Yeah, the resolution, as far as I can tell, is silent on that garage structure. And that's fine with me. I'm trying to figure out where in the resolution it talks about the guest house.
So, thank you, Chair Quillisi. The staff report is specific regarding the quote-unquote "guest house" and that any reestablishment of it as a guest house or used as an ADU would have to come back to the planning commission. So if the planning commission, or it would have to be addressed, I shouldn't, I take that back, that it has to come to the planning commission, but it would have to be addressed under a separate permit if the planning commission wishes to add a condition that's specific in the resolution. That would be appropriate. I mean, that's something that you can do if you'd like.
I think we should make it clear that we're not gonna approve any additional residents. This was designed to be, we're specifically asked...
And I think that's fine.
...for a temporary thing for caretakers. So, you know...
Or a renter.
My point is that the administrative report is not a legally binding document, but the resolution is.
Yeah.
And so if we want to bar use of the guest house as a dwelling of any sort, then that ought to be somewhere in the resolution.
And so I'd like to go a little bit further. So if the house, the property is used as a single-family use and there's an accessory structure, and in the future, next month, the property owner wants to use that as an ADU, that does not, is not required to come before the planning commission.
Oh, that's the second unit compliance program or whatever you call it?
It's a ministerial process, and they would come to us. Now, if they wanted to use it as a guest house, but there's just no...
So...
That would come before the planning commission through a conditional use permit.
This is a non-conforming use, and we have a right to put what conditions we're allowing them to come back. And I don't think we should allow them to have an ADU on this property.
That's been decided by the state.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that.
We have no, we have no rights to say that.
But this ADU is a permanent thing.
The ADU is permitted in the BP zone, and it's a ministerial action.
But even though this is temporary?
And in particular, conversion of existing structures to ADUs is specifically allowed ministerially.
Yes. And also, this is not necessarily a temporary situation. The applicant is asking for reestablishment of a single-family use. They're not saying, may we do this for six months or five years. They're asking for it to be done. We don't know what's gonna happen in the future. We don't have an application. It shouldn't be, I don't think it's, they're not calling it a caretaker's building. They're calling it a single-family residence. We don't have an application for anything else other than to reestablish the single-family use.
And for the reasons stated, yeah.
Anything other than that is speculation at this point. It could be literally anything, aside from reestablishing what the existing building that's there that's vacant, reestablishing that.
One might say that approval of the resolution reestablishes a single-family residence with an illegal guest house and a garage.
Well, except it's not an illegal guest house. It's an accessory structure, and if they want to turn it into an ADU or a guest house, they need to go through a separate process.
Okay.
May I move that as a question, as the two resolutions that are here, the one resolution that's here, with the modification to that, that it include that there is no authorization for use for the guest house until they submit something, but we are granting single-family and garage uses for the two of the three buildings, and that we get on with it?
We can, if the commission wishes, there can be specific language added to the resolution. That's before you.
Is that a motion?
I think you said move, so...
I'll second it.
Okay. Discussion. So this is narrowly considered to bar use of the existing guest house as a dwelling?
Until such time as they have...
If something happens in the future, it happens.
Right.
Okay.
Well, if the planning commission were to bar anything from, any kind of residence from happening in that accessory structure, then that could get in the way of an application coming before staff. We would have to come back here to amend a resolution.
Yeah, actually, I'm not sure we have the right...
Talk into the microphone, please, Vice Chair.
Well, it's a...
I said, I'm not sure we have the right under the state law to withhold, to say that we preempt that kind of process. Yeah, preempt the process.
Then it would be appropriate to withdraw the motion.
This point is just a building. It doesn't have a use.
We don't know.
It's a building at this point. There's a building outside that at one time was used for a guest house or whatever.
At least according to the drawing, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we're being asked to allow a non-conforming use.
On the property.
We can say we're only allowing the main house to be a residence. The rest of them are not residences. I don't see why that is illegal.
Hey, Maura, you still have something to say, obviously.
Well, the title, which is, you know, six lines long, I'm gonna call it a title, if the planning commission so wishes, could be altered to be more specific regarding all the structures on the property. That would be the project description, that the project description, it's for the reestablishment of a non-conforming, single-family residence and does not include the...
Any other existing structures?
Any existing, or any accessory dwelling through this permit or something. I'm gonna leave the language up to you, right.
It could be a shed. But we do...
It'd be an office.
Unless the motion is withdrawn, we have a motion and a second on the table. And in terms of discussion, for some of the reasons that Commissioner Bennett has already named, I suspect we would be running afoul of some part of the state law if we try to restrict the use of that accessory building.
I'd just jump in here and echo those concerns as well. I would just jump in here and echo those concerns about state law possibly preempting our re-chair.
So, Jamie?
So.
So I would, again, actually, I think I'd like to keep it as it is, and that is...
The motion?
The motion, and that is a motion to approve the use of a single-family house on the property. And if there is a way to, if there's a desire for additional uses, to apply through the, through the process...
The normal city processes.
The normal process, not even city, the normal process for adding additional occupancy to the...
I think that's what we already have. I don't know what you're changing from what's here.
I think we've probably talked it to death.
We may have talked all the way around it.
Could I just insert that there could be language added to condition number one that specifies it? Right now, it just turns to the site plan, but instead, put it in writing what Vice Chair Bennett has mentioned.
That's all we're approving, is the single-family and the other units we're not addressing, essentially.
Correct. You're leaving that up to the process.
What language would you add to condition one?
Right now, one only says the approved project shall be substantially consistent with the approved architectural plans on file with the community development department.
Shows three structures.
Which shows three structures. Instead, you add language specific to what Commissioner Bennett had mentioned, which is it reestablishes the single-family residential house as a single-family residential use.
Nothing else.
And leaves the other two structures.
And be silent on the other two structures?
Well, look, it could be that one of those two structures could be easily turned into an ADU, or it could be...
Either one.
Either one of them, but it could be that either one of them could take substantial modification to be turned into that.
To become a dwelling.
To become a legal dwelling. And so, yeah, I just think we don't...
And section five of our conditions wouldn't allow that.
Correct.
Unless they come back to us.
That's what I was about to mention.
Yeah, right.
So, yeah, so I think that language would be good, just saying we're approving...
Are we allowed section five? Are we allowed the section there?
Section five is already there, so if they wanted to substantially alter that guest house to make an ADU, they'd have to come back, because that's not allowed under non-conforming use.
I want to revisit the city attorney's concern here.
I think the, you know, Vice Chair Bennett, and we just talked about condition five, I think because it's non-conforming use, that if we did amend condition one, just refer to the single-family.
To the primary residence.
To the primary residence.
Garage.
Right. You know, then maybe the garage, if there's adequate parking on the site, then can be converted to an ADU. But not with the third accessory dwelling, accessory structure on the site, because that wouldn't be included as opposed to the approved plans at the moment. So...
You can, at this point, if this were reestablished as a residential property...
Right.
Residential use, then they could legally go through some process with the city to make the guest house a legal guest house.
Right. An ADU, you mean?
No, no, a guest house. An ADU without a kitchen. Okay? And once that process was concluded, then they can go back and convert the garage into an ADU. That's the way the code reads right now. You can have a guest house and an ADU if you get them in the right order. If you get them in the wrong order, you can't have both. Another little quirk in the code.
It may be helpful also to have the, it sounds like the applicant is not here, but maybe the applicant's representative, you know, back on the line and ask them if they're willing to, you know, commit, and we can add a condition that they won't, you know, pursue a guest house conversion, if that's something...
But you just said we couldn't do that legally. That's what I was trying to do originally.
So the ADU stuff versus the guest house is a little different.
So I think if we just make condition one, that we're approving the one-story residence, reestablishing it, and I don't, do you need to approve the garage? I mean, it's there. I mean, what do you need to approve it for? I just say we approve the residence and don't even bring the other two in, because if you say you're approving the design, that means you're approving the guest house, because it's listed there.
Right. I think that was the community development director's, unless, I mean, he'll correct me if I'm wrong, his suggestion as well.
Yeah, let's just have that first section, just say we're approving a reestablishment of the residence.
Full stop.
Full stop, that's it.
Good. We're making progress.
Okay, so we're gonna, well, we still have a motion on the table, folks.
I would like to amend my motion and just have an approval of the residential building, full stop, on the property. And if they wish to do more, they... And if they wish to do more, they can bring it to the planning department. And the planning department has certain things it can do and certain things it can't do without us, and.
Okay, so we're talking.
They know what it is.
About at the end of project-specific condition one. Excuse me. Adding a phrase.
No, you just changed it.
Specifically with regard to the primary residence?
I'm sorry, what page is, what page of attachment A is it?
It's page three.
Page three.
Page three, right.
Condition one. If, if, if we are, if we are of the opinion that substantially consistent with the approved architectural plans, if that's this right here, that includes all three structures.
So why not just say.
So if we, if we want not to do that, then we need to modify condition one to specify either which ones we want to include or which one or ones we don't want to include.
Or we don't, you don't use this language at all about approval of architectural plans.
You could say, I'm just, I'm going to suggest language. The approved project shall substantially be consistent with the architectural plan for the one-story residence on file with the community development department.
Well, they're not being permitted.
We're doing, I'm, so the, the design's still there, but you're just specifying that one building.
That is silent, that is silent on the guest house.
Yeah, we're saying silent on everything else.
We're saying silent on everything else.
But does silent mean you can't do it, or?
Silent means they can do it.
You can do it if you want to, and nobody said you couldn't.
They have to still submit a plan.
Yeah, because.
Whatever they put in there has got to meet, meet the.
Well, the question is, if they, however we wind up approving the resolution, if, if the owner or a representative of the owner or whoever begins to occupy the one-story residence as a residence.
Right.
Is it possible for them, with this language or some other language, to in fact?
Occupy the guest house.
Rent the guest house as a second dwelling? It may be illegal, and they may have to go through some process with the, with the city to make it legal. I mean, there's lots of illegal accessory structures around the city, I'm sure. Some of which are rented and some of which are not. But where do we stand? What's, what's the legal point here? How do we, how do we, if we wish to approve this residential use for the one-story residence, but not for the guest house, what language is required?
The language that the community development director said a few minutes ago, with the approved project shall be, shall be substantially reestablishing the single-family residence as a single-family use, and then only.
Only, yeah.
And that's your condition, so that condition is rewritten to be more in turn with what was the intention this evening, and also.
So that we're approving residential use for the one-story residence only?
For the single-family residential use only, and.
Not, not, we're not approving the use only, we're approving the use for that structure only.
Okay, so for single-family residential use for the single-family, whatever it's called, structure.
For the one-story residence only.
Right, and then when we have an approved resolution and the plans are approved by the community development department, there's an X through the other, you know, through the other unit or structure there, or a note on there that it's not a part. It's not a part of the approved plan to have that guest house there, because the words "guest house" is on that plan.
Are there more plans that have to be submitted to the community development department if we approve this resolution to use it as a residence?
Uh.
Can't we just take the word "guest house" off of that?
No, it's not, nothing, nothing beyond that is required.
Right, because there's, there's no, there isn't any construction or, you know, being proposed.
There's no landscaping, there's no construction.
And if there were.
Maybe interior modifications, but that's not part of our swim lane.
Right.
Correct.
So we can just take the word "guest house" off of there?
Which, which, which was an oversight, and I should have done that prior.
So your design doesn't even have it on, it just says "building"?
Well, it says existing.
Accessory structure.
Building, guest house.
It says "guest house."
Yeah, but at this point, it's not a guest house, it's just a building.
It's not a guest house, it's just an accessory structure.
Yeah. Existing accessory structure.
Okay.
So we, we can re-label that.
Okay.
Let me just, have I got this wrong? I thought that, that we could not approve or disapprove of an ADU. However, that, in concept, however, the building department has an envelope of parameters that an ADU must satisfy that are simple, but are nonetheless things that we have no, we have no purview over. But, but there, there still are regulations, and, and we can't either waive those, modify them, or approve them, because they are laid out in state law.
Yes.
That's correct, and it's also, the community planning has some guidelines too that we look at. It's not just the building department, but it is a ministerial review, it does not come before the planning commission.
Right. So where do we stand with the motion and second that are on the table? I'm not even sure at this point.
He amended it.
What they are.
I will.
The amended motion.
The amended motion has not been seconded.
Okay, I will amend the amendment if I can.
You can, you can, you can agree to the amendment.
You can propose it to me and all of.
I'll propose that we accept the language that was just stated by the planning department.
Which we understand to exclude the use of the guest house-named structure.
Yeah.
As a dwelling.
And so that, that number one is going to be rewritten, we're not editing it. It's going to be rewritten to include that.
Right, yes.
Okay, accept that?
Yes, I accept that.
Is that clear? As mud?
No, it's, it's clear, I, I understand what, what this, what this body is looking for. There is a, a motion, it's been amended, and then another amendment that was seconded, and then a friendly amendment. Do you accept that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so that's the question that's on the table. Yeah. Okay, so I'll call a question if we're all through discussing it. And Sheri, let's call the roll on this resolution in item three.
Quillisi?
As amended.
Quillisi?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Starkweather?
Yes.
Terrific.
Ooh, that was work.
Yeah, I didn't see that coming either. I thought that was a two-minute no-brainer.
Yeah, I didn't think they were going to say what they said about it either, I got to be stressed.
All right, so we go on to item four.
Chair Quillisi, could we take a five-minute break? If, if it pleases the commission.
It is eight o'clock straight up, let's come back at 8:05 and continue the hilarity.
Thank you.
Please.
Mic's off.
Okay, it's eight oh seven, we're gonna go back on the record. And we are at item four, Lucas.
So priorities of planning commission and community development department. This is a regularly scheduled item that we put on every meeting. But I do wanna make a couple of notes in regards to this. And I think we've actually added in subcommittee reports on the ad hoc committees that I believe include Vice Chair Bennett and Commissioner Starkweather. For parking and for housing, it is Commissioner Murphy and Starkweather. Are those correct?
Yes.
First of all, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Second, typically with this, we highlight the, an update on various items that are, that have been taking precedent by and consumed some staff time over the two week span since the last time you had seen this item. And that's Title X update, we've been working on that for the bulk of three, four years. Covid certainly didn't help with, with processing and moving that forward. But I would also like to note something, you know, we have a changeover in council currently. And these items that we're seeing as priorities are part of previous council. We have new three, three new council members. And I wanna caution the, the commission as we move forward that this item likely will not be on every agenda moving forward. But instead, taking heed with what council may very well provide in terms of direction for these items on a subsequent joint meeting with planning commission. Typically, those joint meetings happen with all commissions. And this, this commission is no different. The previous meeting that we, the joint meeting we had had obviously was with previous council. And they had given these priorities. I can't say that those are gonna be the same priorities moving forward with this new council. So I think it's fair to just identify that these items are of stagnant, not necessarily old business, but it needs to be reevaluated. Where not, this business continues to be the priority as a task for this new council.
Yeah, I think.
Questions? I, I know that there is a workshop that they're, that they're working on in the near term. No date. And additionally, we do have scheduled in the future, I can't say the exact date, of a joint meeting where planning commission will have the opportunity to meet with council as a joint, as a joint item. I don't have the date on that either, but I just wanna recognize that those two things are coming in the near term. And I, I can't guarantee that these items will continue to be priorities and tasked items for this body.
Well, I, I suspect that Title X update and general plan update will continue to be of interest to the council. But I think the rest of it, whether you like them or don't like them, is, is gonna be at the discretion of the new council.
Right. There will be lots of items that they more than likely will be discussing. And more than likely, there will be items that they already have as a part of their itemized checklist or.
Is that an open meeting?
Right. It's a public meeting.
Retreats makes it sound like they're.
No, it's a public meeting.
They just, they retreat behind this desk. Yeah, I think we're probably required to be in the process of the general plan update.
Yeah, we have, we have an obligation with our general plan to update it. That's been committed through an agreement with, with hard money that has been secured as well. The direction of that general plan is, could very well be steered differently than where it's at right now. So it's, it's tough to say that we're continuing to move exponentially through that process, given the new, new council that we have as well.
Yeah, so for other than perhaps Title X and the general plan, we're waiting, we're waiting to hear what, what the priorities of the new council are.
And Title X, even though it says Title X update, there may be more specific earmarked pieces that, that the council is asking for and giving direction for this, this body to review. As opposed to a kind of broad perspective as, as it's been reviewed up till now.
Yeah. And that's, even the work that we've done in, over the past three years is not complete.
Correct.
It's complete to a certain point that we can, that we could bring forward, but it's not, there's still other issues there.
Yeah, I mean, looking at the errata, that's really setting the table for the bigger discussion.
Right.
You're talking about joint meeting?
Your microphone's not on.
Is your microphone on?
Oh, sorry. Well, this joint meeting is that, is the idea that each body comes in with a set of?
So, if I can, I'll, I'll start and then you can fill in, or you can start and then I'll fill in. Okay. So with these joint meetings, typically one or two meetings with this body, we discuss the items that are of importance for this body. And then we take those items and put them together in a staff report. Staff will put that together, take that forward as a joint meeting. And typically, it's, we try to focus on three, maybe four items. Anything more than that gets a little bit redundant.
Doesn't get done in an hour in any case.
Yeah.
So we would, for this joint meeting, we, we as a body would come up with three, two or three items that we would like to be a focus of this?
Correct.
And they would do the same thing?
And they would say yea or nay to these and say, we've actually got one or two that we'd like you to add. That, that certainly happened at the last meeting where there were a couple of items that were on this list. And then there were a couple of items that were added to the list as well. It's been so long, I can't, I can't sit here and discern which ones were added. I will say this, at one point, we actually had them itemized in one through eight. And in that joint meeting, it was made very clear that these were not meant to be one through eight. But in fact, identifying that they are to be done and crossed off.
Will be equal priority.
You know, it's interesting too, if you, yeah, be equal priority, that's true. I have, staff has taken the items that have been completed off of this list. So I know and recognize that we have a list here today. That's not necessarily the same list that was presented and agreed upon by the former council at the joint meeting.
I did have one question about this list. The last one on the list, design guidelines and map and policy review. Are the design guidelines part of the general plan? Are they subsidiary documents to the general plan that don't have the legal standing of the general plan? Where are those?
So those, those are per code. They're, they're like a policy extension to the code. Meaning, like, for instance.
Code is law and the design guidelines are regulations.
Regulations, they provide the necessary process, design standards by which to follow.
So the East Ojai Avenue design guidelines, they're referred to in, in the code.
Yeah, and actually, they're actually, I think, referred to as in the general plan as well. So it's further referenced.
And there are also the, the Arcade has a design guidelines.
Correct.
Those the only two?
No, there's, there's four in total.
Four in total, okay. What are the other ones?
I, I knew you were gonna ask me that question. I can't remember the other two, but I, those two.
They must not be very important.
No, they are, they're equally important.
That's East End. Cause I've tried to keep a copy of all these next to my ordnance, but I guess I don't have them all. But anyway, I'll look and see.
There are three or four, yeah.
Maybe they're in my, maybe in my land use file.
The two that we, we tend to refer to the most are the Arcade design guidelines and then the East End design guidelines.
So there's no downtown design guidelines?
Yeah, I think it's actually the downtown plaza, which is the area just to the north. So it's that area within the downtown area.
The Arcade Plaza.
Yeah, Plaza behind the Arcade.
Oh, that, okay. So there's the Arcade and then the Arcade Plaza.
Yeah, and the reason why, we rarely use those, they're, they're not used that often. The Arcade design guidelines certainly are, because any sort of signs or paint changes or facade modifications that are proposed, they go through HPC.
And there's another one that, that has at least some applicability on the south side of Ojai Avenue.
Sorry, I'm not remembering the fourth one. I can look them up if, if we're interested, but that, that's not necessarily a discussion for today.
Okay, well, there is a paragraph here that says, subcommittee reports by parking and housing.
Correct. And I.
Are you suggesting we not do those until we hear from city council as to whether they want those things done?
So I'd be curious for, for the, for the exercise for tonight, what sort of updates. But I would strongly recommend that those be paused until we get further direction from.
That was sort of my feeling. And I have talked to several city council members about, maybe it would make sense to join these together. Cause they talked about a housing one, for an example, rather than having our task force that, you know, the people that are on this, we could be members of the larger.
There was an ad hoc committee of the city council that was gonna work on parking. And I think both members of that ad hoc committee are gone now.
Uh, one member.
One of the two is gone?
Correct.
Yeah. But we never got a report for it, so it kinda doesn't exist.
It's hard to exist with only.
No, no decisions made.
But I mean, there's nothing, it's just.
I don't know that there's nothing, but there, there wasn't an official response that came out of that ad hoc, so.
So, yeah, so it's staff stuff.
It'll be, I mean, the idea is that it would be reevaluated with this, with this new council.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I would like to know whether the current city council wants to address parking. Because that was something that some of us did, but I don't know that they do. So before we, we spend a whole lot of energy, I mean, I've done a lot of research on it.
Parking, I think are both important, but we, and, and we could go off and work on those things as private citizens, but not as planning commissioners unless the city council says do it.
Yeah, until Mr. Robert came in and said we could do it, I never thought we could. So, so we, we have new, new, new bosses now, so.
Okay, so, so we're gonna, we're gonna delete item four from, from future meetings until we hear from city council?
Correct.
Are we going to discuss the general plan or Title X?
I think the.
Future meetings pre, prior to hearing from city council?
I think leaving general plan on, I think is still appropriate. Title X, I would hold off until we hear more, get more direction from council. In terms of that, maybe that direction, curtailing it within a certain direction.
But we could still do the errata that we were doing.
Yeah, the errata is, is something that.
Might as well finish that, you've done all this work on it.
It's correcting errors that are already in the code.
Right.
Incorrect references, incorrect, yeah.
So why don't we finish that, rather than.
That's slammed in the package right now.
Correct.
Okay, done with that? Item five, planning commission tentative agenda for future meetings.
Yes. So for February first, we have a review of the director's exemption and minor conditional use permit for Tipple and Ramble, 315 North Montgomery Street. We have all the information, we've been gathering over the last year. We're reporting on that and then providing information to this body. It is an annual review, just like we did for Ojai Rancho Inn just a moment ago. So it is, if, if there are potentially any changes, and I, we're still working through the staff report right now. But if there are any changes, it's a two-step process. Meaning you receive and have discussion on the annual review. If they have any asks, those need to come through a formal process.
I recall, but I wasn't involved, but just reading about it in the newspaper and hearing that there was a lot of dispute between neighbors and the property at the time.
That's true.
So has there been any attempt like we did with the Love Social to get the neighbors and the business to come together and be in agreement as to what the condition should be and so forth?
You mean, has there been any, any reconciliation between the two parties?
Or you're, well, you, you led, you led the effort with Love Social. So you haven't reached out to see whether they are interested in doing something like that. Would save us a lot of acrimony and so forth.
I have not. The focus has been compliance with the conditions and making sure that, before it comes to this body, that they've addressed the conditions that they were required to address.
Are you, are you monitoring Tipple and Ramble the way you have monitored Rancho for the last year?
It's slightly different monitoring, but you'll see an Excel sheet that'll cover, that'll cover those bits and pieces as well.
Be similar data?
Yes.
Okay.
But now, when, before we got to the mediation with Love Social, I believe you indicated that this planning department had reached out to the neighboring properties about their concerns. So you haven't done that, why?
Uh, not recently, but yes. When the approval first came in, yes, we did reach out to the neighboring properties.
So is there any reason why we're not doing it this time?
For Tipple and Ramble?
Yeah.
No, I'm talking about Tipple and Ramble, yes, I did reach out to those individuals.
Why we're not doing it for the update.
But it was.
Love Social was approved temporarily and then they were coming back, so.
Well, they came back with, with different asks.
I don't wanna, look, each of these kinda stand on their own merit.
That's true, I'm just talking about some principles.
Yeah, the one we just had earlier ha, is, is certainly under different merits because of the parking situation and the fact that they have events. And Tipple and Ramble, I don't wanna, Tipple and Ramble's a little bit different just because of, of the fact that it's a single use, operating, surrounding, surrounded by basically either single-family residential or residential just in general. Even though it's under the guise of, of VMU and the use itself is operating under C1, I'll, we'll talk about that more then. It's just a, each one kinda stands on their own right and finding solutions.
Morass comes to mind.
Finding solutions to each of those is probably unique to each individual use as it comes forward.
But this upcoming review is like tonight's in the sense that it's, have you complied with your CUP and DRP?
Correct. Are you in compliance? This is your annual review. And barring the review of that analysis that is, that is still pending and still, still under the review of it, we'll be making a recommendation in terms of how to move forward.
Okay, and I, my, my recollection is that there is a condition of approval on that case, that word, wording is substantially similar to what we just dealt with tonight, which says, starting in January of 2023 and annually thereafter, there will be reviews.
Yep.
And so if there's an ask to discontinue those reviews, that'll be a public hearing.
Correct.
Otherwise it won't.
A separate process. Otherwise, that condition of approval stands.
I see.
We, we didn't bake in a sunset provision on any of these and maybe.
Neither one, yeah.
And maybe over time and getting experience with a number of these, which is concerning to staff, cause they could wind up spending a lot of time doing this. We may have the default be that there's a sunset after a certain number of years.
So if the staff wants to add conditions, and I'm not suggesting you are, but then that would require a public hearing.
Correct.
It would, any, any change to a CUP. But from, to take the opposite side of the coin, if you put a sunset provision in, then say it's three years, then you're effectively telling that applicant, you have to be good for three years. And if you can do that, then Katie bar the door. And, and it, I, I think it's more appropriate to say, we're going to have annual reviews until we decide, until we decide that they're not necessary. Not putting any particular number on it and being very cognizant of the workload it is for the staff to have any one of those. Wanna be fair to both sides.
Yep. Hmm, okay, so then there's a two-story addition for February fifteenth. There's a two-story addition to the main residence at 1206 Ayers Avenue. I'm putting a question mark by that right now, only because we recently received a resubmital and we're gonna have a meeting with them before.
Changed the plan?
Um, yeah, they changed the plan. I think we need to have a, a discussion before it comes before this body.
And we'll leave general plan update on each of these meetings, but we're taking work plan off?
Yes, I think we should be taking.
Do we have a new work plan?
I agree. For the February first and moving forward, that work plan is gonna be stricken from future agendas until, until.
I have a question, and that is, there's this inventory of stuff that we've been through some process on sometimes.
Please talk into the microphone.
I'm sorry, we, there's an inventory of stuff that we've approved or have reviewed, but has not been brought to us for approval. Is there a reason we don't have a sort of ongoing list of those things?
Accomplishments?
Well, no, maybe not accomplishments. I, I'm thinking specifically here, we've had a couple of looks at, uh, the.
Formula Business?
Olive and Grand.
Oh, you're talking about specific current projects.
Where we've, we've had a, we've had a concept review.
Right.
But we haven't had a request for a DRP.
Right. So concept reviews are simply a, hey, this is kind of conceptually what we're thinking. There is no, there's no hard money that's really been spent on any sort of particular studies. What do you think?
And there's no decision made by the planning commission either.
Correct. And I don't, I don't wanna get into too much detail on specific projects, because we do have commissioners that.
I'm just asking in general, are there a, um, is there a list of those plan? A list of those things we've taken a look at, so we know there's bubbling out there? Or it may be bubbling, or it once was bubbling.
Pending, that's pending.
Pending, things that are pending. Well, I think it's important to note that, and I, I think Mara said it best earlier when there was a discussion of the item regarding the use. And I could tell it kept circulating. But the reality is, is that any, anything that's proposed in the future has not even been submitted as a proposal. It's all pie in the sky, essentially. And some of those things, while after a concept review goes forward, there's still no guarantee that a project like that will even come forward formally. It's just pie in the sky. They're asking, they're not spending a whole lot of money on it in terms of technical documents and other items that may be required as a part of the process.
This pending item for 1202 East Ojai Avenue, Little Bowling Alley property. This is, to my recollection, the third, the third project on which we've had a concept review. And the first two died with, without any application for a DRP or a CUP.
But they have a DRP now. We're gonna make.
They have a, they have a DRP proposal.
Third concept review.
It's not, it's not a, it's not a concept review.
This is a design review.
This is, this is an outgrowth of the third concept review. The first two died like a motion that doesn't get a second.
Right.
I don't know if this mostly in concept reviews, but I hope this time that the landscaping will be the one, the, making sure that what we're actually reviewing in a design review, that we actually get whatever it is in, in advance. I think it's twice we've gotten landscape reviews where they brought it to the meeting, cause they had changed it. I don't think we should be setting up. I don't think we should be setting up design reviews unless the applicant has completed everything, get it in advance and look at it. I don't like looking on a, on a PowerPoint and having to make a decision without having gotten it in advance. And that's happened.
I mean, noted, and we'll, we'll make sure that that's corrected for future projects. Landscaping just specifically is not necessarily something that always comes to this body for final review. I've had this conversation and I know we've had this, this.
The code says there must be a landscaping plan if there's a certain amount of landscaping being done.
Yeah.
But that's to be reviewed by the, the building department or the.
Which is typically why it's a concept review, um, concept review plan. But I do agree, getting it the night of the meeting is not fair to this body, um, in terms of what you're.
And in this case, this, this particular one, if it's gonna be the same plan, the landscape was a pretty big part of the whole design.
I can't speak much about it, uh, right now because it is pending.
It's pending, yep.
Yep, so I'm not gonna say anything more.
So, um, I've had two city council members ask me since I was at the meeting where the Cabrillo project on, on Bryant Street proposed one. What's the?
It's not on there yet, it's pending even, in fact.
Water, so they, they're not, they haven't come to you yet or anything, okay?
Uh, have, have we had discussions? Absolutely.
Yeah.
Is there something formally that's been submitted? No.
Okay.
Just a grammatical request. Two places here, it says a two-story addition to a main residence. I think it's a second story addition.
Second story addition, yes.
Otherwise, otherwise, we're gonna have a three-story house. Which is, may not be illegal, as long as it's no, no taller than thirty or thirty-five feet.
Depending on the zone.
All right, any more questions of staff on item five?
Is there any way to stretch this meeting out any longer?
I think not.
We've gotten, we've gotten done sooner than this. We did seven thirty one time.
By going to the school board is what we've done.
You think, you think they're gonna be gone now?
No.
But to walk in three hours late is.
Yeah. Well, they often leave the most important items to the, after three hours. I have been there where you, they didn't get to things till four hours, so.
Well, in terms of the deliberations of the planning commission, seeing no other obvious business before the commission at eight thirty-four, I declare this meeting adjourned.